Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us today. My name is Gloria Lara, and I am the Chair of the Michigan Civil Rights Commission. For those of you that don't know, the commission is an eight-member body created by the 1963 Michigan Constitution. We are the only commission of this type that is enshrined within the state constitution. And joining us today are Commissioner Regina Gasko and Commissioner Zena Elhassan. Also joining us is Executive Director John Johnson of the Michigan Civil Rights Department. We are specifically charged with enforcing the civil rights protections against discrimination that Michigan affords to every resident and visitor. The commission is responsible for investigating alleged discrimination against any person because of religion, race, including hair texture and protective hairstyles, color, national origin, genetic information, sex, including sexual orientation or gender identity, age, marital status, height, weight, arrest record, and physical and mental disability. In addition to housing, we enforce civil rights laws in relation to employment, education, public accommodation, law enforcement, and public service. The link to streamed text for CART can be accessed through the link that is in the chat. Today, we are here to engage in a public hearing on fair housing. We convened this event because we would like to hear testimony from the public about direct discrimination or disparate outcomes experienced during housing-related transactions. That includes buying a house, renting a house or apartment, credit ratings, home loans, or appraisals. On a personal note, I am Latina and my husband is Black. We've been married for well over thirty years. But every single time we've looked for a new place to rent or a house to buy, he has never come with me. And that is because I didn't want someone seeing him and then thinking, "Well, we really don't want to rent to them. We really don't want to sell to them." So this is something that's always in the back of my mind, so it can happen to anyone. Today is the second of four hearings to happen around the state in the coming months. Our commission convened a meeting, a hearing, in Detroit last November. In-person hearings will happen at Mott Community College in Flint on March 16th and at the Center for Community Transformation in Grand Rapids on April 28th. Everything will end with the 2024 Civil Rights Summit on Housing being held on June 12th at the Icon in Detroit. The department will use this testimony to create a report of recommendations that will be announced at our Civil Rights Summit this June. In order to get the best recommendations, we would like to hear personal experiences and expert testimony on a variety of issues that can impact fair housing in the state of Michigan. Remember that the commission is here to listen and to accept testimony. We are not here for extended discussion or debate, only to listen. The commission may ask questions in order to clarify our understanding of the testimony. This event is being recorded, and we will review the testimony as evidence toward creating our recommendations. Also, as a reminder, we will not be discussing individual cases tonight. If you have a question about a current or pending investigation, I may ask you to stop in order to protect the integrity of our investigation. We will ask that you contact the department directly at or call 1-800-482-3604. I will now ask Deputy Director Woolridge to read some housekeeping notes.
Thank you, Chair Lara. Good afternoon, Chair Lara and Commissioners. In order to ensure an orderly and efficient hearing, I have a few protocol notes. Chair Lara will first call those who indicated they wish to provide testimony while registering for this hearing. Anyone who has not already indicated a desire to testify may enter their name and city in the chat. The public comment timeframe for speaking will be five to seven minutes, depending upon the number of people who wish to testify. There will be a visual timer showing the following colors: green for two minutes, yellow for thirty seconds, and red for stop. The chair will then indicate when time has elapsed and it is time to hear from the next participant. Please also be aware that we will verbally warn any speaker only once if they use or display inappropriate, inflammatory, or disrespectful language or images. If use of that language continues, the speaker will have their camera and microphone muted. When your name is called, our MDCR staff will unmute your microphone and camera. You will have five to seven minutes to speak, after which we will mute your microphone, take you off of camera, and call the next person. This public hearing will end at 7:00 PM, so we will take our last testimony a few minutes before that time. Please note, the sole purpose of the chat is to allow participants to add their name and city if they want to provide testimony. Please do not use the chat for commentary or questions about the testimony. Please contact 1-800-482-3604 or visit www.michigan.gov/MDCR for general information about the commission or department or to find out how to inquire about cases. Members of the media may email questions to vickylevengood@levengood, L-E-V-E-N-G-O-O-D-V, at michigan.gov. Written testimony may also be provided to Harold Core at core, C-O-R-E-H, at michigan.gov. That completes the public testimony protocol. Chair Lara, I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Woolridge. I would also like to acknowledge that Commissioner Richard Corvo has also joined us. We will now begin accepting testimony by calling the first name. I would like to ask Mercedes Lewis to please come and testify.
Hello?
Hi, yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us? Harold, I don't know if Mercedes has dropped off.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me, Mercedes?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Well, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm not sure if my situation is considered concurrent. I haven't spoken with anyone at you guys' office. Can I just give you like a brief statement of what I'm going through, and then you can let me know?
If you could please give us, you know, your story. We cannot, of course, at this time, give you any type of information or discussion of your case. But the reason for these hearings are to gather stories, gather situations from citizens and people across the state of Michigan.
Okay. With me, I have been living at a subsidized living in Saginaw, Michigan for past fourteen years. I have recently, in the last year, was able to find a job that took me out of marketing for getting assistance. So I was thankful for that. I updated my apartment complex with that information. I was kind of given some discouraging words, like I could no longer live there due to me getting the job increase and that I would possibly have to move. Once I asked for information in regards to that, I was given some pushback and then later was told that I would have to pay possibly intermittent payments after I asked for proof of documentation that I couldn't live there. In between that timeframe, a lot of my paperwork became missing in the office. They began to tell me that I didn't report items. They were asking me to backdate some of their paperwork during their audits, and I was refusing. So I got a lot of issues with the apartment complex behind me refusing to do paperwork and turning in my updated income with them. From there, they started to tell me that I owed them money because I never turned in information. I showed them proof that I should turn in my income with them for the situation. Then it turned into, oh, they would only give me credit for me turning in the proof of the... of turning in information. It was no longer their responsibility to... and it would be my error and not theirs, even though they had the information. With me, I just felt like it was a lot of discrimination with me because I became able to get out of the program and I was no longer no bad to them. And also too, that I would not, no longer, allow them to have me try to backdate their information and make sure that their audits are correct because they're not following items. Also, I was making reports to them about items not being repaired in the apartment complex. And I began to get threats of being evicted from there. And still, some of those repairs still have not been performed a year later. So I guess that's where I'm standing right now with the situation. I'm still fighting for them to get the fees off of my case because I feel as if that's their responsibility and I feel as if information came missing after I made complaints with them. So I kind of feel like they were kind of harassing me with that as well. And I got a lot of questions that was odd as to like, "Oh, how long you been on your job?", "The age of my job?", it was not, nothing pertaining to the paperwork when they asked me these questions or have attitudes with me as well for it. And it was just overall being discouraged on living there. I felt like I didn't want to leave because I'm comfortable with the community. I have a good relationship with my neighbors. And I guess that's it on my end.
Well, Mercedes, thank you very much for sharing your story with us. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact the department.
Okay.
Now, we will ask the next person, Eileen Boven, to step up. And following her will be Dana Paglia King. And while we're waiting for Eileen, I would also like to acknowledge that Commissioner Portia Roberson has also joined us.
Hi.
Hi, Eileen, can you hear me? Hello, Eileen?
Hi, I apologize. It was such a need over to panelists view. But thank you for this opportunity to speak just briefly about discrimination and how it's detrimental to economic success. My name is Eileen Boven. I'm Senior Vice President and DEI Officer at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Discrimination in lending, credit rating, home buying, and apartment rental leads to an economy that's not fully engaged and leads to a number of us just not being able to participate. The obvious impacts are disparate outcomes and higher levels of homelessness, poverty, and unemployment among our marginalized communities. Furthermore, and maybe not quite as obvious, is an economy that's not fully engaged, which not impacts just only our communities, but inhibits our ability to fully realize our potential economically as a community and as a state. Safe, accessible, affordable housing is a key component in placemaking for the MDC. And placemaking is part of our holistic approach to economic development and make it in Michigan Strategic Framework. Everyone needs a seat at the table: residents, state agencies, local organizations, developers, and more, to ensure that we're making the most equitable, feasible decision. And I think that opportunities like tonight are a prime example of this. The MDC is working towards promoting developments, projects, and employers who include accessible housing as part of their plans. An example of some programs that the MDC utilizes to increase affordable and fair access to housing across the state would be the Build My Community Program, which is reactivating underutilized or vacant space by promoting capital investment for real estate entrepreneurs. There's also the Michigan Economic Opportunity Fund, which is a micro-business loan program for women, veterans, and all entrepreneurs of color who don't qualify for traditional loans through banks and other financial institutions, providing opportunities for those who are socially and economically disadvantaged due to a lack of access to capital and credit. And a variety of other technical assistance programs, like a developer toolkit, which provides resources to emerging developers looking to complete development projects that increase private investment, create jobs, and make lasting impacts in our communities around the state. Ensuring that we create meaningful access to our programs and services is a key priority of mine, whether that's working to remove language barriers through translation and interpreters and checking for accessibility, or ensuring that we are doing more targeted outreach to ensure even distribution of information, which is critical to addressing disparities. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share today, and I look forward to continuing these conversations and collaborating on possible solutions as we look towards the Civil Rights Summit on Fair Housing this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. We will now hear from Dana Paglia King.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Hi, everybody. My name is Dana Paglia King, and I am the Short Term Programs Manager at Community Housing Network. We are the Housing Assessment and Resource Agency, or HARA, of Oakland County. I work directly with individuals experiencing homelessness, at risk of homelessness, and fleeing domestic violence or human trafficking. Over the past five years or so of working with these vulnerable populations, I have seen countless examples of housing discrimination as defined by the Fair Housing Act. I was able to help my participants connect with local legal aid and fair housing centers, but most times, I found myself needing to educate the landlords and property managers above all else because affordable housing is hard to come by, let alone affordable housing that works with the programs that I oversee. That's another issue for another day. Some examples I want to bring up, just to highlight some of the experiences I have seen: A landlord stating that he prefers not to rent to single mothers because he does not want to deal with the, quote, "baby daddy drama". A county commissioner, so an elected official who owns properties, so is a landlord by trade, stating that they don't want to rent to people with children. And when pressed further on the issue, he believed that because there are senior-only complexes and properties, that he can also decide what age and what type of people he gets to rent to. Another landlord did not want to rent her second-floor unit to a family because the family had a daughter with a disability. And she quotes, she said, and I quote, "She might throw herself off the balcony, the daughter with the disability." These are just examples of some of the housing discrimination claims I have seen in Oakland County. Again, this is a county with huge wealth disparities. If you look at the folks who live in Pontiac, and then right next door, go to West Bloomfield Hills, we are talking about major wealth disparities in this county. And it's really important to note that in these instances, I was working with these families in question, so I was able to help them navigate these issues and connect to the appropriate resources and experts or educate the landlords in question because again, we are in dire need of landlords that are willing to work with our programs. But most people probably...
This is the interpreter speaking. You are speaking incredibly fast, so just keep...
I'm so sorry.
...we're having interpreters here today. Thank you.
Yeah, I will slow down. Sorry. I would actually not... for talking too quickly, so I can't say I'm surprised that this was a comment received today. So I just want to say it's important to note that...
Again, please, slower. Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Now I'm like nervous. Okay, so they were already working with me as a housing case manager. So not everybody has a housing case manager that they are able to work with and connect with on these issues. Furthermore, I would question if people even recognize what is housing discrimination, what a landlord can and cannot do. There's an educational piece that's missing there. I could easily spend the rest of my time tonight making policy recommendations for fair, equitable, safe, and accessible housing, but I won't do that. There's probably not enough minutes or hours in the night or even in the week ahead. But I do believe that a recommendation that might even be low-hanging fruit here is that there needs to be some level of oversight, education, and engagement to ensure that landlords and property management companies not only understand and abide by tenant rights and protections, but are truly held accountable when discriminatory practices and unfair practices take place. There's no education system. Just about anybody can become a landlord outside of some cities requiring basic rental registration. And even that, there's very, there's not a lot of code enforcement with there, right? Our court code enforcement is, they're just not able, they're stretched thin, so they're not able to take care of the rental registration issues. And that's just the building code, right? That isn't rental, that has nothing to do with discrimination. So that being said, and now my dogs are sleeping, so it's perfect timing for me to wrap up here. My basic recommendation would just be more oversight for the landlords, something that actually held them accountable. Thank you. Sorry I talk so fast.
Thank you, Dana. We will now hear from Ilina or Eilina Kristin. And please excuse me if I mispronounce your name.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ilina Kristin, and I am an attorney with Farmworker Legal Services. We are a statewide nonprofit legal service provider that represents immigrant, migrant, and seasonal farmworkers and their dependents throughout Michigan. We mainly represent farmworkers in cases related to their agricultural employment, which often includes discrimination, unsafe housing conditions, and threatened evictions. The Department of Labor estimates that there are about seventy thousand farmworkers who regularly work in Michigan. About five thousand of these workers are domestic workers who live year-round in Michigan or travel to Michigan from other states. About twenty thousand of these workers enter the US on an H-2A visa. We've seen that there is a lack of reliable permanent housing options for farmworkers in Michigan, and this has caused them to face a variety of violations of their civil rights. They are for migrant workers are often forced to leave their families and live in overcrowded conditions in employer-owned housing. Seasonal farmworkers often live in housing that is not subjected, subject to state licensing requirements or inspection. And we've seen a growing number of farmworkers working longer seasons and contracts, therefore, being forced to live in temporary housing that is often inadequate. Our farm, the farm labor force in Michigan is primarily Latino and is comprised of a significant number of foreign-born populations. Employers that utilize the H-2A program are required to provide all of its farmworkers with free employee, employer-provided housing if the farmworkers are unable to reasonably return to their residence within the same day. This requirement is to encourage US workers to apply for agricultural jobs, but what we are seeing is that US-based migrant and seasonal farmworkers are being denied H-2A employer-owned housing and job opportunities. And they are being informed by their employers that they are instead using H-2A visa workers or foreign workers. And these denials are based on national origin, race, or immigration status. In addition, H-2A farmworkers working in Michigan have had their movement and privacy restricted while living in employer-provided housing. H-2A workers often are not permitted to leave the housing or get groceries for themselves outside of work hours without a chaperone.
Ilina, you've frozen?
Our clients have also informed the employer's permission or in terms suffering from a cold. Many migrant... Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, maybe if you turn your video off?
Yes, I'll do that. I apologize.
No, no, that would help with the stream.
Okay. Also, migrant farmworkers travel to Michigan with non-working spouses and children. And they've reported living with their families in crowded housing that is owned by their employer. We've also seen clients with families being denied housing upon arriving at their jobs in favor of employers hiring farmworkers without families, which is in violation of the Fair Housing Act and the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act. Farmworker families who can obtain housing often live in crowded conditions with or sanitation facilities. I had, I have a couple of clients who have reported having black mold, poor running water, or undrinkable water while living with their families in a trailer. They, a lot of these farmworkers live in housing that is owned by their employer, making their employer their landlord. This makes workers extremely vulnerable to raising complaints about their housing because they're putting both their income and their housing stability at risk of potential retaliatory actions. This is even more severe for workers whose immigration status is also tied to their employment, like H-2A visa holders. While there are anti-retaliation legal protections, the Act of Retaliation is very significant and very severe that often outweighs any potential remedy they may receive. In addition... I'm sorry, I lost my place. In addition, our clients often live in housing that is unlicensed. Although state and federal law mandates certain minimum standards for migrant housing, a lot of these laws have not been updated to address the increasing periods of time that workers are living in employer-provided housing. Migrant farmworkers have reported living in labor camps that have not been inspected or licensed. MDAHR reports indicate that they've licensed migrant labor housing to accommodate roughly... M D R reports indicate that they've licensed migrant labor housing to accommodate roughly um, thirty seven thousand individuals. However, U S D O L estimates seventy thousand farmworkers in Michigan. Um, so the nu- the numbers don't match up. And that indicates a significant use of unlicensed housing by farmworkers and their families. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and uh, we look forward to working with you on these important issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alina. We will now hear from Peter Hammer.
Good afternoon. My name is Peter Hammer. I'm a professor of law and director of the Damon J Keith Center for Civil Rights at Wayne State University Law School. Um, at the Key Center, we believe that spatial structural racism is our generation's primary civil rights challenge. Um, and I was speaking to Mr. Core whether or not a structural perspective would be helpful. And he assured me that he thought it would uh, to complement the individual stories you have. And I think it's very consistent with the amazing work that this commission did uh, on the Flint Water Crisis, uh, looking at that crisis through the lens of spatial structural racism. So I was working on an article looking at Sykes versus McGee, which is the racially restricted covenants case coming out of Detroit in nineteen forties. And I ran across an interesting historical artifact. Uh, and that artifact was a U A W memo on post-war urban housing in nineteen forty-four. Uh, and it was written by uh, R J Thomas, who was the president before uh, Luther. And I think when you look at that document and you look at the preceding years, uh, you see that the failure to provide housing i- is not accidental, uh, is a political choice. Uh, and the sort of li- outlines what we'd need to do to provide fair, affordable housing, uh, doesn't take rocket science. So you could distill four key lessons from the nineteen forty-four U A W memo. Uh, one is the claim that housing is fundamental. Uh, housing is not only fundamental to individual health and prosperity, housing is fundamental for the health of cities in general. The second truth is that housing is a government and public responsibility, uh, is not a private and market responsibility. The third truth, you got to remember, this is when Black Bottom and Paradise Valley still existed. Uh, a very strong argument that you had to build alternative housing before you engaged in any blight removal. Uh, putting, keeping people in their house first uh, as a, a justice priority, but also an economic one. Uh, if you built alternative housing, the actual value of the slums would come down and the removal process would cost the government uh, less money. And the fourth point was that you could not have a housing policy uh, in a city like Detroit without urban planning at a regional level. So regional planning and not just sort of competing cities uh, was essential if you're going to address the housing issues. If you contrast that, what would actually happen in Detroit? And this is a story most of us know in the forties and fifties. Uh, none of those teachings were taken to task. Uh, we had the Detroit Plan for Blight Elimination in nineteen forty-seven, uh, which privileged development downtown uh, and blight removal as a means of development. And it sounds exactly what we're doing in Detroit uh, in the last ten years. We had the election of Mayor Kobo in nineteen forty-nine, uh, and he was not going to follow the uh, uh, the edict that you should build alternative housing before you engage in, in blight removal uh, or slum clearance. He was very happy to accept federal dollars to destroy houses uh, and refuse federal dollars uh, to build alternative housing. Right? And so again, we get this theme coming through that these are not accidental choices. These are conscious choices that are being made uh, at different parts of our history. Uh, we have the siding of I three seventy-five through Black Bottom uh, without alternative housing. Uh, we have the siding of I seventy-five through Paradise Valley. So by the time you're in the nineteen forties, you have segregated space existing inside of the city uh, and, and, and often violently protected. What happened significantly in this part of the story doesn't get told as much is from the nineteen fifties to the present. And this is where the, the lack of urban planning at a regional level comes in. We've had a complete resegregation of the region of Detroit. Uh, and what's happened now is no longer do we have segregation inside of the city. Uh, we have segregation where entire cities like Detroit and Pontiac uh, are functioning as segregated spaces uh, uh, inside of, of, of very segregated regions. Uh, and the absence of regional planning was, was critical to that. Uh, and again, the mixes is of, of factors or things that we're familiar with. Uh, white flight, uh, discriminatory lending practices, uh, Federal Expressways and transportation policy and state transportation that solve the regional need to have housing and jobs mixed, right? Uh, but doing so at the needs and interests of white suburban uh, residents. Uh, and then we have the U S Supreme Court decision in nineteen seventy-five of Milliken V Bradley that basically said the Supreme Court was not going to do anything about segregation uh, at a regional level. Uh, we could just simply have that and, and that was not going to be uh, any legal concern. And significantly during the same time period at a regional level, we were building ten thousand more houses a year than were needed. Uh, and that put tremendous pressure, a downward pressure on the older housing stock that existed uh, inside the urban areas. If we move to a contemporary uh, setting, uh, again, we find that these atrocities of the past didn't go anywhere, right? We are doing things in the last ten years uh, that are just as atrocious as clearing out Black Bottom without having any new uh, additional housing. We had the predatory subprime lending crisis, right? That led to a huge number of private tax foreclosures. In Detroit, we had the public tax foreclosure where we had willing public decisions not to reassess housing values in the wake of the Great Recession. Uh, we had a completely dysfunctional uh, Wayne County Tax Foreclosure Auction. Uh, and we've just devastated uh, the housing market in the city of Detroit. And we have thrown a hundred thousand people uh, out of their homes, right? Conscious choices, not unlike what we did uh, in the nineteen forties and nineteen fifties. We have black flight now following white flight into suburban spaces. Uh, and we're currently using hundreds of millions of dollars to subsidize corporate developments, often owned by billionaires uh, at the sake of, of not investing in, in public housing and affordable housing. And one of the most extreme examples of that probably comes out of the Future of Health Project, uh, which is dealing with Henry Ford, uh, the Pistons owners and M S U, uh, or the owner of the Pistons who is a billionaire himself is going to build uh, three luxury residential housing buildings in Detroit at a total cost of two hun- or three hundred and twenty-two million. Uh, two hundred and twenty million of that is going to be public subsidies, right? So we have this interesting sort of parallel if we use the bookends of the nineteen forty-four U A W uh, memo uh, where we're still not following those precepts. We still don't view housing as fundamental. Uh, we don't treat it as essential to individual health and the health of cities. We don't view housing as a public responsibility, but rather something that can be pursued by private markets with marginal subsidies. Uh, we are still kicking people out of their homes uh, through tax foreclosure crisis, uh, just as we did uh, uh, in the nineteen forties with Black Bottom and Paradise Valley. And there still is no regional planning uh, a hundred years later. So my point is, and thank you for listening, um, is that the absence of public housing, the absence of housing affordability is a choice. And it's a choice that we've made decade after decade uh, and are still making. And I think that these stories you're hearing, which are, are very significant, um, are better understood if they're understood in that light. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will now hear from Nordus Emke.
Commissioner, this is Harold speaking. I do not believe uh, Emke is still with us.
All right. Thank you. Then we will now hear from Alexander Giles or Giles.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
My name is Alex Giles, and I'm a Fair Housing Test Coordinator with Legal Services of Eastern Michigan Fair Housing Center. And I'm calling out of Saginaw, Michigan. I'm here to discuss my experience as a former fair housing tester and as a current fair housing test coordinator. So I became a fair housing tester uh, due to an interest in civil rights and economic fairness and housing discrimination denies both. So I was interested in doing my part to reduce discrimination. As a tester, I was primarily assigned race test. I was the white tester and I was matched paired with a black tester. And I performed phone call tests to uh, housing providers in Bay, Midland and Saginaw County. I know testing is important because my testing partner and I were treated differently when making contact with housing providers. Um, as a tester, I was not informed of the results of my testing as a standard practice. However, as a coordinator, I was able to review the tests that I completed um, with my testing partner in the previous quarter before I joined and the result. As a tester, phone calls felt routine and I was observing the ordinary business practices of each housing provider. Then later, as a test coordinator, I was, I had the ability to see the results of these tests. And I observed that the black tester I was paired with was racially discriminated against in um, the last four consecutive tests at four separate sites we had conducted, conducted together. And um, apart from those four, there was um, discrimination throughout the time we were testing together against um, my uh, black testing partner. Then I was hired as a test coordinator with Legal Services of Eastern Michigan in March twenty twenty-three, uh, following my experience as a tester. Um, we have a private enforcement initiative grant or a P E I grant, which covers four counties. And I cover um, Bay, Midland and Saginaw Counties. We also have funding from the City of Saginaw Community Development Block Grant or uh, C D B G. And that's testing within the City of Saginaw. And we have a City of Midland C D B G grant, which is within the city limits of Midland. Um, when we are testing, we do routine or random tests throughout our area or our jurisdiction. And these tests are based on which housing providers we find. And if they're under our coverage, we um, we, we test them. And then if we need to gather more information or if we have a positive result of discrimination, we will um, conduct retest based on these random tests. We also have client based complaints, meaning our, as a legal services and fair housing organization, our housing clients and fair housing clients will have cases where we can contribute through testing. And our testers will have the same experiences um, uh, or replicate the same experiences as our clients. Um, and we've tested shelters due to a community partner complaint. And we found um, from a community partner complaint, discrimination against people who use wheelchairs and have a service dog and roughly one third of the shelters within our area. Um, we also conduct systemic investigations. These are used to uncover housing patterns or patterns of discrimination within the housing market within the investigated area. Usually eighteen to twenty tests and then analysis. Um, with, within the past year, I have invested, I've conducted testing on the basis of disability, which is service animals, emotional support animals, um, and mobility related disabilities. This includes our shelter testing uh, previously mentioned. And this also includes um, the tester asking questions about accessibility and informing the housing provider of their need for reasonable accommodation to see if this results in differential treatment. Um, I've also conducted testing um, on the basis of race and sex. The sex testing has been primarily about um, sexual orientation or L G B T Q testing, which tends to result in a high number of positive results for discrimination. I've also conducted a familial status testing and age. Uh, for age testing, we have a emancipated minor systemic investigation um, submitted in which emancipated minor housing applicant who have the same rights and responsibilities as an adult were found to um, be discriminated against at, with sixteen point seven percent of the housing providers um, they, they had called uh, within Bay, Midland and Saginaw Counties. And this discrimination um, be- because um, these, these minors are just younger than the young adult comparison um, were discriminated against due to age violating Michigan's Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act. I also have an ongoing um, reentry from incarceration systemic investigation in which um, there's one black woman with a disclosed criminal record, one white woman with a disclosed criminal record and one black woman without a criminal record. And then we can examine the intersection of race and criminal record. And um, so then it's not just a race test, but also regarding reentry uh, or, or prior incarceration. And our organization um, does experience challenges. One challenge is a lack of testers for retest. This can limit our turnaround from an initial positive result, um, if we're unable to find match paired testers to retest. Uh, we also need more outreach to inform the community of our role, um, individuals of their rights and to recruit a large and diverse pool of testers. Um, so to confront these challenges, I recommend the consideration to uh, for shared use of testers between our Fair Housing Center and the Michigan Department of Civil Rights and other testing organizations to fill those gaps in testers i- in, in tester pool on occasion. And I recommend uh, more funding for testing initiatives and the consideration to collaboratively host or table presentations at community events um, with civil rights organizations and fair housing organizations together. Um, so on behalf of the Fair Housing Center and Legal Services of Eastern Michigan, thank you for the opportunity to testify before the Michigan Civil Rights Commission.
Thank you. We will now hear from Gail Harvey.
Hello?
Hi, Gail. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you so much. And thank you for allowing this uh, testimony. And uh, wanted to start by saying I am the Michigan State Housing Chair for the N double A C P. And we have several things that we are working on um, with our N double A C P group. When it comes to home buying, when it comes to the millennials, when it comes to student loan debt, um, when it comes to the places that they are allowed to and not to buy property. One of the things that we look at is student debt. They're counting student debt even though uh, it's not time for it to be paid back. So they are holding that up when it comes to us uh, in purchasing property. And I am as well a owner of Gail Harvey Homes and a licensed real estate agent. That being said, for every rule that's for us as people of color, there are rules against us. And one of the rules would be you are not allowed to sell your home in the state of Michigan and be selective as to who you sell it to. So if that's what you want to do, you're not allowed to do that with a real estate agent. However, you are allowed to do a for sale by owner and sell it to whoever you choose to sell it to. And then at that point, you can reach out to someone that's a licensed agent to write your deal and get you to a closing. So that's one thing that we have an issue with. Appraisals are not done fairly. The um, sections, they're sectioned off, the housing is sectioned off. And different sections are used to do appraisals to people of color. Uh, and they're of, often different as to the numbers that they use for non-people of color. When it comes to tenants, uh, they are able to raise the rent so high when they're looking at gentrification that people can afford to be there and it prices them right out, no matter how long they've been there. When it comes to Section Eight, there's a list that's unbelievably long and people do not want to uh, rent to them according to um, who they are and how many they have in their household. So thus they stay on that list for quite some time. Landlords that own property threaten to evict tenants if they complain about things that need to be done. There was an adjustable rate program that was done a few years ago. Um, that ended up starting the housing crisis from two thousand and five to two thousand and nine. And what happened with that was people of color were unfairly targeted for loans that gave adjustable rate mortgages. And what happened with that was people of color were unfairly targeted for loans that gave adjustable rate mortgages. And they were told that in so many years, they could refinance to a regular thirty-year mortgage fixed rate. What they did was, at the end of the time when it was time for them to refi, they changed the criteria. And they changed it so the people who they targeted in the first place to get those type of loans could not refinance. Thus, starting the ridiculous amount of homes that were lost in the bubble and it eliminated so much people of color and their wealth. So they did that. And then they turned around and bailed out the banks and said the banks would make sure that you could do modifications and refinances and save your homes. The banks got that money and they sat on it and they did not extend it, which allowed more people of color to lose their homes and their wealth and their equity. Then those homes were scooped up by investors and used as rentals and repurposed and also raised the amounts that they sold them again to the same people of color. They are doing different things with agents as well, discriminating against them. They are redlining. They're saying that there's a law that they can't, but they continue to do so. And you can see this in title companies. When you go through the title work, there's a process. So all of these things are still in existence. We still fight them. And we do need to make some type of resolutions or laws or policies that will fight this. So that's where I'm at, where we are at the N double A C P.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you so much.
We will now hear from Zoe Hulsky.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so um, I was, I was living in a property in Grand Rapids. And there were some issues with my dog. And after, and I should, I should also note that that I am of the LGBTQ society. And after the issues with my dog, I was, they kind of clamped down on just like very minute stuff in the lease to get me to, to either leave. And they had, they're like, oh, well, you know, because you live in a in a, like a community, like there's a common area. They're like, oh, well, this isn't clean enough for our standards. Even though there were no technical standards. They, they kind of came back and they're like, oh, well, you know, this isn't clean enough. And they kept coming back and coming back and coming back. And eventually it, it, it kind of boiled over and I finally made an attempt on my life. And I spent twelve days in a mental hospital for, for that attempt. And I came back and I had an eviction notice posted on my door stating that I was a threat to, to the other tenants. Even though that's not how it went. And, you know, it was, it was detrimental to my housing. And being the fact that I had just took a new job at the time, you know, I, I wasn't able to, to go to work because I was, you know, in a hospital. And ironically, the, the job that I took is in property management. So I had a kind of a unique perspective on unfair housing and, you know, the likes. But that's, that's my story, so.
Thank you, Zoe.
No problem. Thank you.
We will now hear from Elon or Elon Nichols.
Good afternoon. I trust you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear and see you. Thank you.
Fantastic. Good afternoon. My name is Elon Nichols. I'm a fair housing staff attorney at Legal Services of Eastern Michigan Fair Housing Center, also out of the Saginaw office, as ably described by my colleague on this call, our testing coordinator, Alexander Giles. Thank you again for allowing us to speak today. I think you've heard from members of our staff before. In summary, we are, of course, a federally funded legal aid organization with a federally funded fair housing center subsumed within that legal aid organization. And out of our Saginaw office, we cover ten to twelve of our fourteen total counties which operate out of our Flint main office. But I am in Saginaw, as I indicated. And I think it's fairly clear that we have several state, local and federal grants for our fair housing work. And we focus our testing program, which I oversee as the fair housing attorney, in a tri-county area here, Saginaw, Bay County and Midland County, as Alex described. And we represent clients as attorneys who are fair housing attorneys all over that ten to twelve county radius, which includes the thumb and up, up, up a few counties north and to the middle of the mitt and down to Genesee and Lapeer and Chaiwasi Counties. So in those capacities, I'm here today to bring to your attention four specific fair housing issues that we wanted to bring to your attention today and some possible solutions. First, it cannot be overemphasized, and I'm sure this body is hearing it time and again and has heard it yet during this hearing. But the lack of affordable housing in the state of Michigan has reached a historical crisis point. We know this from the news. We know this as a nationwide problem. But in Michigan, what we see in my region borders a rural area and a sort of medium-level municipal area. What we see, of course, is that the lack of affordable housing affects nearly every protected class in the state of Michigan. And under a disparate impact legal theory or disproportionate effect legal theory, persons of color, women, families with children, folks on the LGBTQ plus spectrum, as we just heard so succinctly, persons with disabilities are disproportionately affected by this lack of affordable housing. And we know that access to safe, decent, accessible and affordable housing is a fair housing right, both locally, statewide and federally. That's the first issue I wanted to emphasize. The second issue I wanted to emphasize as a fair housing problem that we see is denial of housing or differences in treatment in housing to those with criminal history. We have quite a few folks coming out of serving time. And the very random and uninformed policies that housing providers have in banning folks from housing who have had some impact with the law, with the criminal law, is really quite staggering. It unfortunately affects our veterans quite a bit, but again, it touches so many of our protected classes. Folks of color, persons with disabilities, folks on the LGBTQ plus spectrum, et cetera. So this is a, a specific issue that I think has gone unnoticed to a degree. Third, and really this is in no particular order, except for maybe the lack of affordable housing, which really is central to so many of these issues. But third, I did want to emphasize the ignorance and really pejorative treatment of our brothers and sisters and others on the LGBTQ plus spectrum in housing. This is an issue that societally we need, and I'll speak to solutions later, but we need some basic understanding and knowledge and training on the matters of LGBTQ plus spectrum individuals. So that's third. Fourth, something that flies a little bit under the radar that our center wanted to emphasize was that local municipalities frequently do have in their local zoning ordinances and even in their development master plans for their municipalities, discriminatory language and practices that attempt to design their municipalities in the housing market according to statuses that are protected from this type of behavior, sometimes even locally protected, if not statewide and federally. This is something that not a lot of the public may see because they're in sort of arcane documents. But it does shape how municipality sees itself and sees the developments in its borders. Next, I'm going to turn.
Can you give a specific example of that?
Yes. I think our center has spoken, I believe our director, Patricia Baird, testified at a prior hearing before this commission. In the County of Bay County, we have seen some things in the master plan and in the zoning ordinances that seek to group or design people based on statuses that are protected. So that's one example. Now I'd like to turn to solutions, if I could. And I'm trying to see if I have a time. I don't, I don't see a time countdown yet. Oh, thirty seconds. There we go. So there it is. Okay, so clearly we need a lot of education and marketing concerning fair housing concepts and in the need for affordable housing generally. Poverty advocates do not want to rely on this, but the truth is affordable housing helps everyone of all economic classes. And we have many instances, I don't really care about them too much, but we have many instances of the wealthy in the middle class being unable to find affordable housing in their desired regions or near jobs. So this is an issue that we can all get behind, I feel. The key thing here is going to be that Michigan needs to pass the bill introduced into the legislature, which would be the source of income protection ordinance or state law, which would prohibit discrimination based on financial status in, in the housing seeking effort. So folks with financial housing assistance, et cetera, would not be allowed to be discriminated against statewide. That would preserve access to some affordable housing in, in small part, apart from what we need, which is federal and state huge investments in development of affordable housing. That sort of goes without saying. In terms of criminal convictions, state law and other provision added to Elliot Larson, and I know there are some efforts underway, would certainly help in that regard. Also, in outreach and education campaign to housing providers on, on HUD's memos, which articulate the wide range of what criminal history or involvement can mean and when it can be used as a factor to, to deny someone housing or when it can't. That would help on that second issue of criminal convictions. LGBTQ plus issues, we need basic comprehensive education and training of housing providers and the public on what it means to be a person of that community and how they operate in their lives and how that relates to their same equal right to have the housing of their choosing, just like anyone else. And fourth, in terms of the zoning and master planning, we feel that the, the C D B G Community Development Block Grant process could be a little bit more fine-tuned with stipulations to protect against this kind of pejorative language that appears in some of the zoning ordinances and master plans that try to group folks based on statuses that are really protected from such, from such behavior. I realize a lot of these things should be addressed to the legislature and are being addressed to the legislature, but thank you for your time today.
Thank you. We will now hear from Kim Yett Williams.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate everyone for allowing me to give a testimony here of what was going on with me. My name is Kimetta Williams. I live in Roseville, Michigan. I had lived at this property for five years by myself before I got married. This past year, I had been, been harassed by a couple of neighbors. I brought it to the board. And because they're just of what was going on, I end up, like I said, getting married. My husband ended up moving in. They receive, they asked me, did I have someone living with me? I told them, yes, my husband. They asked me for his information. And before I could even provide anything, I received a letter stating that of agreement of moving. And I asked them why. And they said they ran his information and they seen that he had a prior history of a felony. And I said, well, what that has to do with something current? So we decide to move because he, he was seeing how they were picking with me. They were following us. I have several police reports against this association. Well, what's current now is I moved, I did sign the agreement. I moved out. My house is on the market. They, after they, after I signed the agreement, they took me to court. When we got to court, they asked the judge to either have me to sign a consent that I will not move back into my property. And I signed that. Or they also asked the judge, if she don't sign, could you allow us to take ownership of her property? To sell it for her. And so I showed the judge that I had moved out in a timely manner. I didn't understand why we was taking up the court's time to be there. So I signed it that I wouldn't move or have anyone to move back in. Well, the problem right now is the property been on the market since September of last year. They've been denying over fifty applicants. I reached out to their attorney and asked them, could they, could he find out what's going on? So I'm paying association fees and a mortgage fee without, to an empty house. I have now living in a rental property because I didn't, wasn't able to close on a house in a timely manner because the agreement that I signed was for me to move in August. I moved out. And like I said, they gave me from May to August to try to finance. And I couldn't get that done in a timely manner. So now I'm paying for all this and the house is empty. I reached out to the association and asked them, what is going on and why are y'all continually to deny people application? So I'm paying for a rental property I'm in. I'm renting, I'm renting a property and I'm also paying five hundred and eighty-six dollars for association fees with the mortgage. And I told them that I was going to reach out to the housing commission against them because you're, you're not, what is going on? I don't understand what's going on. I did everything was asked. And now I'm sitting here paying for all of this and no resolution at all.
Kim Yet, I suggest that you reach out to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights and ask them for their thoughts and directions for the future.
You said Michigan Civil Rights?
Michigan Department of Civil Rights.
I did speak to them and told them that I can I can move back in. But then I'm double paying out of pocket and this house is empty. Literally, I'm still paying the lights and gas at this property and it's empty. And this is not fair to me that I'm coming out all this money and every time I talk to the realtor, he's saying they're denying everybody's application. So what what is their criteria? I don't understand what's the criteria? They said that if someone has a felony and if they don't approve of the felony, then they're they won't accept the application. Okay, so now what? If if that's the case, everybody that's putting in, that's trying to buy this property has a felony? I mean, I'm not understanding what is taking so long of them being able to approve, but all I'm getting is that everybody is being denied.
Thank you, Kim Yet, Kim Yeti. The website address for the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, the website link is in the chat box.
Okay.
So I recommend that you contact them.
Okay, I appreciate it, ma'am, and thank you panel for allowing me to speak today. And everyone have amazing evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now hear from Mary Ann. Am I, am we, am I?
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Mary Ann. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name's Mary Ann Amy. I live in a subsidized housing in Sandusky, Michigan. The reason I am burning yours because my management denied my emotional pet certificate. I called them and I went there several times and I was politely told that they do not accept emotional pets. I was told, well, in that case, we could take a hamster or an emotional pet. And she gave me a definition of what a service animal is. And she just said, we don't accept it. So through that, I was frustrated. I was upset. I decided to call my emotional pet support agency. And they told me it's the law they have to. So then I called Well, I ended up with civil rights. I called HUD and then they gave me a number to Fair Housing. Fair Housing gave me a number to Civil Rights. Through that, I did get an attorney approximately January, and he said that they educated her and I would be accepted with my support pet. And to reimburse me my fees. The only problem I have with that right now is that they want to put it on my rent and I would like a check I paid and I would just like a check in return to pay other bills. Through the frustration of not being able to have my pet at that time, it's been a year over a year. I started in December and now it's February. They don't realize the emotional strain that somebody goes through. You you have mental issues to begin with. I have anxiety. And that that support B might not be much to most people. But in my case, I'm on a fixed income and that has helped me buy pet food, go to gas, whatever. And they might not think it's a good deal, but I have occurred headaches. I have insomnia. I've gained twenty-five pounds in the last year. And the emotional pet, they help. They give you quality of life is what I say. They give me a cost to get up in the morning, a purpose. I've had bouts of depression where I just want to stay in bed. But I I get up, I get up for my cat. And the only thing I would like is for you to educate the management that it's not their decision to decide if you can have emotional support. Educate them that it's the law and it's our right to have an emotional support if the doctor agrees that through our anxiety, insomnia, stress, that it would be helpful. And that is my complaint. I just want to have more education with management. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And we will we will now hear from Patrice Griffin.
Do you want to listen to more of this?
No. Good evening, Director Johnston, Johnson and Commissioners. My name is Patrice Griffin. The discrimination that I'm going to be speaking to took place in Kalamazoo County, including the city of Kalamazoo, the city of Portage, Kalamazoo Township. So I am a lifelong resident of the city of Kalamazoo. And less than five years ago, my husband and children and I were living in a rental home. We came home from work and our home was condemned. Immediately that sent us into a spiral of having to locate another home. Although my professional background has been in property management and I have family members in the community who have owned homes for years, I was not able to secure housing. There were no other properties available from my family, and so that sent us into the systems of Kalamazoo. And we spent two years trying to secure housing. My children were in school at the time and what initially we turned into an adventure of being able to find new housing quickly turned into a tragic situation of humiliation, depression, and it almost made us feel as if we were hopeless. Had it not been for a family member or a friend of ours who put us in a hotel, we probably would have been unsheltered for that entire time. My children started their freshman year of high school and their eighth grade year from a hotel room. And so we started searching, paying hundreds of dollars in application fees, trying to secure housing, only to find out we were not able to be approved. And so it took quite a while to figure out what it was. My husband had prior criminal background. And so I thought, well, why don't I start giving everybody every, all the information upfront? This will help. This will take care of the situation. And unfortunately, it didn't. We were continuously denied, as I said, for two years. And it was incredibly difficult to sustain and maintain in the the years of video chats and cell phones. Your children are trying to play as if they have somewhere to live and duck and dodge around why we can't have people staying in our home. Commissioner Lowery, you mentioned earlier about not taking your husband with you to secure housing. We thought about that many times. In our situation, he was the breadwinner. He made more money than I did. And so we really needed his income. And I was afraid of running the risk of securing housing, not saying he lived there, running the risk of losing housing. We didn't want to take that risk. As I said, it took about two years and eventually my son asked me, he said, Mom, what's wrong with you? There has to be something that you and Dad aren't doing because why does everybody else have somewhere to live and we don't? I don't think I'll ever forget that. I could cry right now thinking about how that made me feel as a parent, not being able to provide, knowing that we're beating the pavement and it's because of a criminal background. And it was through this situation that we learned in two thousand and six, there was you know, guidance from the federal government around disparate impact and how the criminal justice system impacted families such as mine, and that did not matter. What came of this situation is that I began to advocate for individuals such as myself and I was fighting to create an ordinance that protected individuals who had arrest records and criminal backgrounds. And so the outcome of this situation is that I was appointed to the city commission and later on voted to serve as Vice Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo. And while in office, passed the largest housing ordinance in the city of Kalamazoo that added source of income protection. It added protection for survivors of domestic violence. It added protection against criminal background and arrest history and added protection against your source of ID. I currently serve as the Director of the Kalamazoo County Continuum of Care and also created a program called Rentable that would help eliminate some of those financial barriers that people who have those other barriers such as prior background, criminal background and source of income, they can be up against. And yet and still, the issue is still remains. We require and need state law. When people drive across state lines into Michigan, it should be known that discrimination is not tolerated. It should be known by policy, followed up by strict enforcement. Thank you for taking this time to listen to my story.
Thank you, Patrice. We will now hear from Hillary Flexer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Flexer. My spouse is Hillary Flexer and they're with me right now. They have speech impediment that makes public speaking difficult. So our case, we are a family of five. We have three children on the autism spectrum. Hillary and I are both Jewish queer and disabled. And we moved here about two and a half years ago to Michigan. We live in Bass is where this has taken place. We have had some cases come through the Michigan Civil Rights Department. One of them is still ongoing currently. So we had it was very difficult getting into the kind of getting into the system. I have a background from the previous state where we lived. I worked in property management, so I was very well versed with their housing laws. And we had, when we moved in, we had had to, we were in kind of desperate circumstances. Michigan was actually the only state where we could move to. We were having to relocate away from the west coast because it was very dangerous where we were living. So we had to take a second floor apartment, which leads up to stairs, which is not ideal because Hillary does have mobility disability, which makes going up and downstairs very difficult. So we we would regularly submit reasonable accommodations to our landlord and they would just never respond. And this was kind of their general tactic of emails for maintenance, wouldn't be responded to. And reasonable accommodations, even following up, they would ignore those emails completely. So we did, you know, we and this got to be a very dire circumstance because several several months after living there, Hillary's mobility issue became worse and Hillary was no longer able to go up and down the stairs. So Hillary became stuck in our apartment for many, many months. And this had an adverse effect on our entire family, not just Hillary. And in this time, we had the opportunity to possibly get a stair lift funded. And the building was such that it could have been installed. The stairs going up were inside of our apartment. And they would not give us permission to install the stair lift onto our stairs. So when our case finally came up, we were it, we were in a very dire circumstance. One of our children had gone into a mental health crisis and a major full, and they no longer wanted to live in our home. And a major focal point of this was the fact that, you know, one of their parents couldn't couldn't leave. And so this can happen. You know, this, we were involved with the community mental health and this was a very, very, very challenging process. And this was when our civil rights case came up the first time. So we we had a lot of difficulties in communicating with our with the investigator who was working with us. And we had a very stark change in demeanor when Hillary confided in her how urgent the situation was and that it was causing Hillary to have mental health issues because of the crisis and just the extreme the extremely detrimental impact that this was having on 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 us. And the demeanor of our investigator changed after after Hillary had confided having suicidal thoughts because of the extreme difficulty of this circumstance. It it, we did end up moving into a first floor unit, but we were put in a circumstance where so they offered to transfer us after they received the civil rights complaint. And us, we were basically forced into signing a settlement in in order to get this first floor unit. That was kind of an unspoken stipulation. We were told that in the in the mediation process, we were told that our landlord agreed with all of the terms that we had put forward, but this ended up to not be the case. And there were several of the of the details around mold and other things which we had assumed were going to be in there and they weren't. So this, we, the apartment that we moved into ended up having very large mold problems. It was filthy. We, one of the doors didn't lock and we also started receiving section eight at this time. And section eight passed it with not having with one of the showers not working with one of Uh, and section eight passed it, uh, with not having, with one of the showers um, not working, with one of the doors not locking, with I, animal waste smells all throughout the unit. Um, but section eight passed it. So, all right. Try to hurry up here. So uh, we were forced into signing this settlement. Um, they, the landlord has not uh, has not complied with the settlement. So uh, it was never really uh, all that we were told about how to follow up on the settlement was that uh, was to just so, was to just submit a new complaint. Um, so we've done that. We now have um, we also filed a second complaint about, about more reasonable accom- accommodations. They're still not responding to reasonable accommodations. Um, and really they had no incentive for not discriminating because it was just, if you don't, if you discriminate against somebody, well then the worst case, they'll go through a civil rights case and they'll make you do it. But they had no penalty, they had no consequences and their behavior has not changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now hear from Magdalena Rivera.
Commissioner, this is Harold Core. Uh, Magdalena um, does not wish to speak at this time.
All right, um, we will now hear from Anna Scott.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Oh, no, I can't hear you for a moment. I apologize.
That's okay. I had to make sure I was unmuted. Can you hear me now? Anna? Anna, can you hear me now?
Commissioner, uh, Anna Scott is still listed and her microphone appears to be live.
Okay.
Just FYI.
All right. After Anna Scott's testimony, we will take a five minute break. Uh, wanted to make certain that we can get Anna in. Anna, can you hear me? Anna? So Harold, while uh, we're waiting to see, uh, make certain that Anna can uh, that we can hear Anna, uh, would this be a good time to take a five minute break?
Uh, this is Harold. I would say yes. Uh, we can, Anna has been communicating in the chat, so we'll just let her know. Then we'll come back after the five minute break.
Great. And that would be, uh, well, make it six minutes at uh, five forty-five. Thank you. Okay, Harold, are we able to bring Anna Scott up? She uh,
Hi, are you guys able to hear me now?
Oh, I can hear you, but uh, can you speak a little louder, please?
Yes, I apologize. Um, are you able to hear me now or?
Yes, I can hear you. You sound, you sound a little raspy, but hopefully we can get through.
Uh, I, I apologize for my uh, rap.
Right, because I, I see that you had to change uh, to a different uh,
Voice.
Right. Please go ahead.
I'm there with you. Um, hi, my name is Anna Scott and I'm a registered nurse. And I am in the greater Van Rapids area. I have lived here my entire life since I was two years old. I am a thirty-nine-year-old single woman, never married, and I have no children. Except the little one I lost before I even knew I had it. I am a follower of Jesus. I'm biracial. And I have mental health and physical disabilities, along with a compromised immune system. The mental health disabilities I've developed that have made life very difficult have occurred throughout the last three years of my life. I am providing you all with this information about myself, as I am the one who is the individual who has suffered multiple repeated acts of egregious injustice through housing discrimination, violations of my fair housing rights. But I also know, I'm not just speaking for myself, as this is something extremely widespread and occurring to individuals and families every day in my community. I am and always will be an advocate and a voice for the voiceless. I am beyond grateful for this opportunity, as I have been speaking out to the wind, attempting to rectify the gross injustices I have incurred. Due to the CPTSD, complex PTSD that I have developed and multiple incidents of deep domestic violence I have been through, which I'll touch on in a moment, I will attempt to testify to my current situation and I will be sending a longer written testimony afterwards. It is not for nothing, as I have been and became an advocating member with lived experiences with multiple state and national advocacy or national organizations, sharing my story. The individuals in some of the highest positions in these organizations have also been my voice and support. Some of these organizations include the Michigan Coalition Against Homelessness, our coalition, I, Expanding Housing Access Source of Income Work Group, the National Low Income Housing Coalition, Crime Survivors for Safety and Justice, and Time Done, both on the national and state level. I was also offered a seat on the Michigan American Nursing Association's legislative meeting for a two-year term in which I served. They are the highest level of nursing advocacy in our state. But due to the domestic violence I was going through, I had to decline the generous offer to serve another term. While I will focus the majority of my time on my current situation, in which after developing complex PTSD, due to the egregious housing situations and housing instability with the pandemic, I was able to receive a mainstream, which is a disability housing choice voucher with the Grand Rapids Housing Commission. In which after living in D V for over a year, including having a trade from the Michigan Coalition to end domestic and sexual violence for eight months. After an illegal eviction in which the judge ignored HUD's fair housing eviction standards, just the word of one of undocumented abusers led to Grand Rapids Housing Commission terminating my mainstream housing choice voucher on the allegations of subletting, et cetera, in which that abuser is on court record, admitting to doing the accusations they had claimed. While moving up the chain, as I was, I have been on the street and set for an informal hearing two months out by the Grand Rapids Housing Coalition, I unfortunately almost died from going into septic shock from septicemia from a bilateral kidney infection during this time. I raised their failures to, to even communicate or respond and their failure to um, HUD's air housing and equal opportunity offices on the state, regional and federal level with no response to these complaints. I then was directed by colleagues from the National Low Income Housing Coalition to contact my state, United States representative um, at their district office. The district rep I have been working with, or I have been trying to work with from our congressman, Norman Shultons District Office, has also failed to get HUD to do their job or for any action. And I honestly at the point of suicide, I'm starting to take my own life the other night because no one should ever go through anything I have. I'm actually gonna skip part of this. Um, and come back if necessary. While I could I had to make a choice to not work during the pandemic due to my compromised immune system and being in our own. The ongoing failures and known problems were state unemployment insurance agency. We not only recontracted this company during this time, but their failures led to people like myself whom are an individual family unit, losing their benefits three times. While I can sorry, one minute, this is the pressure. So being unable to work, the pandemic has led to me being failed by broken systems. I'm unable to work at this time through these. Since the start of the pandemic, I have become practically homeless. I have developed complex PTSD by everything I've been through, then finally receiving housing assistance to get my, on my feet. And now have been in multiple D V instances. And now being homeless since the end of July and sleeping in my Jeep through these gross injustices that have occurred with me losing my housing, mainstream housing choice voucher unjustly. Long story short, I guess that wasn't even five minutes, but thank you for some of this.
Thank you, Anna. And just a reminder that you can submit additional written testimony to Harold Core at Core, C O R E H, at Michigan dot gov. We will now hear from Chetia Walker Henderson.
Hello?
Hi, Chetia.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate this opportunity to uh, come before uh, the commission on the state of Michigan on this matter with um, the, with um, affordable housing. Um, Um, I have been a person who had a section eight voucher and I became disabled in December of twenty twenty-one and stemming after COVID. I had uh on on in November yearly was my annual recertification and I had did my recertification, turned my paperwork in and my worker had expressed that she needed some more additional information. Um, at that time, I was trying to provide her with that, but I was in the process of making a move. Um, a lot of stuff was going on in my life. Me and my husband were ex-husband were estranged and they were still counting his income as part of income and for to determine to calculate my rent. Um, I had expressed to them on several different occasions that he no longer live with me and he was incarcerated. I sent them a proof of incarceration so they could uh remove his income as part of my income so that my rent would reflect the true amount that I was actually taking in. Um, now, this was during COVID because um it was late twenty twenty-one and we were getting help with the I think it was Sierra Sierra um program through the federal government when people were affected by COVID. I was a person who was laid off. I worked for Lansing Schools because I reside in Lansing, Michigan. And um we were, the schools were the first ones to close during the COVID pandemic. And so I was unable to uh go to work and I did not have income. Uh, so I reported this. I did get help with Sierra and they paid my landlords um for, I think it was for four months, and then they even gave us an extension to apply again. Um, so with the Lansing Housing Commission is who I was dealing with um for my voucher, I felt uh as if they totally discriminated against me when I had been exposed to COVID. Um, for one, um during this time, the staffing for the Lansing Housing had became very short and it was just such a high turnover. It was almost impossible to contact a worker. The building was closed, uh workers weren't returning calls and I was steadily trying to contact my worker to let her know my situation about um the income and about me needing to move. I had been living in the same residence for thirteen years and it was just, I really had outdone it. My children were there when I first moved there. They had became grown and I, it was just me. So I needed to secure um a less lesser housing as a lower bedrooms. I was living in a poor bedroom. And so that's the reason why I want to move. Unfortunately, I became sick with Sjogren's syndrome. And um when I tried to contact uh section eight, the Lansing Housing to let my worker know, I found out that the worker I had previously had had, you know, another turnover had left and I was a new worker. However, I I wasn't assigned or I wasn't notified by mail that this is who I needed to deal with at that time. However, I pursued it myself to figure it out. So the person that I needed to that I needed to assist me, my new worker, she never had contacted me until it was time for my recertification, which was November. So anyway, um, long story short, I my voucher was then taken from me. I was to meet my worker at a library or some random place that we were going to move up. Uh, I think one time she said a gas station, one time a library. Then um because I had been exposed to COVID, I was unable to um, you know, meet with her. I had to quarantine and I let her know. Now, I remember Whitmer governor was giving people, you know, more time and more um more leniency basically with those type of situations because of the pandemic. And uh I know that, you know, I didn't, I was in quarantine. I'm not supposed to be around anybody or, you know, be, you know, I had to close myself into the house and and I and I wasn't diagnosed with COVID, but I had Sjogren's syndrome, which is an autoimmune disease that attacks your lungs. It caused me to have intestinal lung disease. And so I was unable to breathe. I had been in the hospital for over a year um fighting this disease and my worker still terminated my voucher even with me being disabled and not being able to uh to retain information or find out who I was going the um to see how.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you would, uh, yeah.
I'm sorry. Um, because at that time, my um, the worker, it was such a high turnover. I kept getting moved to a different worker, a different worker, but not with proper notification. I wasn't getting anything in the mail or to find out. When you try to contact them, there was no way to really contact. You could leave messages. I wasn't getting, you know, called back, no information. I just know that I got a termination letter in the mail finally saying I was terminated and I was in the hospital fighting for my life. And I I had contacted my representative Alyssa Slotkin and she referred me to um my local uh person that could assist me in this matter and she did. Now, I filed a complaint with the Michigan Civil Rights, well, actually with HUD. Um, and then they referred me to the Michigan Civil Rights um uh Commission and I contacted them and wrote a letter. They had first denied and said and said that um this was a matter that, you know, it wasn't, you know, they only had that information on that side, not mine. I appealed and let them know um what was going on with my information. And what happened from then was that uh they uh they um approved my appeal. Now, the commission, I I had end up not hearing anything from, they told me in the letter that I would have to wait till a representative would contact me from the commission to further investigate to so that I could, so that my voucher could be re-estated. And so I hadn't heard from them and I don't know, I'm not gonna say that it's not because they reached out to me. I just think it was due to me being so ill that I was in hospital for that amount of time for a year. I was, I actually had passed away and was resuscitated. So a lot of stuff um I I might have missed, but when I contacted uh the representative Alyssa Slotkin, she went to bed for me and um, you know, uh was trying to help me to retain the voucher. Now, at this time, I don't know where I'm at with.
Shatia, yes, you are.
It doesn't say on my screen. I'm sorry. But okay, I just, I appreciate you all listening to me and I just, you know, I want you all to know what's going on with being discriminated by the housing authority with people with disabilities.
Thank you, Shatia.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
We will now hear from Lisbeth Iglesias Rios.
She didn't come out now, ma'am. Ma'am, you can come out now.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, Lisbeth, we can hear you.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Lisbeth Iglesias. I'm a research investigator and an epidemiologist in the Department of Epidemiology at the University of Michigan School of Public Health. Uh, my testimony relates to our ongoing research with the Michigan Farm Worker Project. And this is a project that we started in twenty nineteen in collaboration with the state and local organizations providing services to farm workers. In twenty twenty, as part of the mission of M D C R to improve farm worker housing in the state, Marcelina Trevino and colleagues at M D C R obtained a grant funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development Fair Housing Assistant Program CARES Act that says the issue of her housing among farm workers in the state in the context of the COVID nineteen pandemic and beyond. So as part of this grant, M D C R commissioned our team to conduct this research with farm workers to better understand their housing situation and the complex interplay between housing, employment, and health in this population of workers. And I think it's very important to keep in mind this interconnection as this also has been highlighted by so many people here presenting testimony and this is the case for these workers. So in February twenty twenty-three, we published a report describing the findings from this study. Uh, it's titled Fair Housing Access Affordability and Quality for Michigan Farm Workers. Uh, and I have requested to include this report and other two peer-reviewed publications that I'm the first author of this research that provides support to this testimony. So I just wanna present very quickly some of the key findings. Um, our study found that farm workers in Michigan, uh housing access affordability and quality are very important and complicated issues that need to be assessed within the context of their employment and working conditions. Recarious employment and the economic marginalization of farm workers affects their housing affordability, access, and housing quality. Our studies show that farm workers reported very low annual incomes. More than a third of farm workers were classified as living in poverty. This is more than three times the official poverty rate in the general U S population in twenty twenty at eleven point four percent and U S-born Michiganders at thirty percent. Food insecurity emerges an important issue for farm workers. Over a quarter of farm workers were classified as having low or very low food security, twenty percent. This is more than double the level of food insecurity in the U S households at ten point five percent in twenty twenty and almost seven times greater than the three point nine percent of U S households facing very low food security. The majority of migrant and seasonal farm workers reported no receiving food stamps, sixty-four percent of them, and of those with children under age eighteen living with them, more than half, fifty-seven percent, reported no receiving food stamps. Food security is an important social determinant of health and good nutrition is foundational for overall health and well-being of farm workers and their families. Farm workers in our study reported that they face many challenges when it comes to housing access and affordability, which are a very important factor for health, as spending a larger amount of income on housing may affect the ability to access nutritious food, healthcare, and other health-promoting resources. About a quarter of migrant and seasonal farm workers reported being denied housing when trying to find rental places in Michigan. Most of these participants stated that housing options in Michigan were very expensive and that their salary was just insufficient to cover rental services. About half of our participants reported living in agricultural worker housing sites with the majority of those workers stating that it was because they didn't have other option, housing options. More than half of the workers stated that they would like to receive some support from local and state organizations to find housing in Michigan, yet only seven participants had the experience of contacting an organization in Michigan for help with a situation related to housing. The type of housing offered to workers and the ability to pay for fair and safe housing are aspects of housing access and quality impacted by the work arrangements, worker schedules, and wages offered to these workers. Farm workers in the study work in a variety of agricultural tasks related to field crops, packing plants, nursery, sovereign houses. These workers reported very long schedules with the ability to take some breaks. They were exposed to chemicals and pesticides at work, which was a concern noted by over half of the workers. Almost a third of participants noted that they're never or rarely offer personal protective equipment by their employers. So the dynamics of the working environment was a very salient issue for the workers. Um, they noted the stressful nature of their work and experiences with mistreatment, verbal abuse, threats by their supervisors, like threats of being deported, losing their jobs. Many farm workers living in employment-provided housing perceive the humanizing treatment at work consistent. This is consistent with the studies that we have conducted before and after the pandemic. The COVID nineteen pandemic exacerbated these challenging and difficult housing and work conditions for farm workers. Workers who reported having tested positive for COVID nineteen and who had to quarantine noted that their economic situation worsened due to not receiving economic compensation from their employer. So just a very quick recommendations and provided by the workers is to improve their housing and working conditions, including recognizing the need for a dignified, safe working environment, fair treatment and payments, having balance and equity in the hiring process of migrant and seasonal and H two A farm workers, and the creation of an independent, easily accessible reporting system through a neutral party to be able to anonymously present and address work-related and housing-related complaints without fear of retaliation. Currently, systems of reporting are mainly through governmental websites that are often not easy to navigate or accessible for farm workers, particularly those facing language barriers and those who may not only be able to access the system via a cellphone. And other important suggestions is increasing housing options for all workers and the regularization of legal status of undocumented farm workers or a legal working permit for those that have been working in the U S for years, which could help with access to more housing options. Um, yes, there was a person that talked a little bit more, so I just went two minutes and I will be done.
We have eight more people. We really want, would like to get by uh done by seven. Are you are free to submit your written testimony to Harold Core?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Chavette Patton and I'd like uh the future speakers to be at five minutes so that we can get through all the people that are currently in line. So if you could bring up Chavette Patton, please.
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanna say thanks for this opportunity. So for the past current year, I'm just gonna say I've been residing in Taylor for seven years. I'm on subsidized low income. And for the seven years I have missed here, the last year I have um I have a rotin problem that I reported to the office and nothing's being taken care of. As well as that, prior to that, in two thousand and nineteen, I reported to management that there is some type of mold or fungus that was growing in my bathroom. So I had it tested this year and it came back. It's two different funguses growing in my bathroom and the levels are reading high. One is due to mold. The other one is due to like bacteria of like outside leaf. So I've been reporting to the city of Taylor as well because the manager here, he refuses to do anything about the rotin problem. He refuses to do anything about the two funguses that are growing in my bathroom. And upon me um reporting him to the city of Taylor, I contacted another third party as well to try to get this situation resolved. And instead of fixing the issues, he keep retaliating against me. So this prior December, he took me to court and tried to beat me and tried to violate me under HUD guidelines because I withheld my rent from November into December. And I wrote him a letter and I told him why I was withholding my rent until the repairs was done. Currently, um, the judgment was set aside for um December the twenty ninth for me to pay the the court costs, the leg fees, and the rent, which I did pay. I also hired an attorney as well. So when I went on the twenty eighth to make the last payment, I made contact with the manager, which prior to the whole situation, he's been being rude, disrespectful, and nasty to me. He's threatened me several times with leaf violation, said. He's also threatening me to beat me or refuses to renew my lease as well. So as of right now, when I went to twenty eighth to make the payment, um, the doors was locked, the lights was off, so I couldn't get in. So I called the court. The court told me to contact his attorney, which I did. His attorney let me know that there were two people currently in the offices to go back there and make the payment. So when I went back there, it appeared no one was still there. So I knocked on the door loudly so someone could hear me if they were in the back. So the manager did come out and he was very rude and disrespectful. So he did let me into the office. Upon entering the office, uh, he was very rude. He asked me, did I have a payment? And I stated, yes. So upon giving him the money order, he snatched the money order from me. Then he asked me that I need a copy. I told him no. So from there, he proceeded to yell at me in a very hostile manner and told me to get off the office. I never argued with the man. I refused confrontation with him. So I asked him, was there somebody else? Was there somebody else I could talk to, which he told me no, and he refused. So I asked him for my money order back because I felt very disrespected. And just felt just like nothing at that point. So he still yelled at me. He gave me the money order back. He still proceeded to yell at me and tell me to get out of the office. Which I did, but before I left the office, I called his attorney and let his attorney know how he treated me. And even when talking to his attorney, he was disrespectful. So now of the December the twenty ninth, the following day. He he asked a new attorney and he wrote me up for being threatening and he has done this in the past too from October till current. He keeps going around saying I threaten employees, I have assaulted employees and all types of just disrespectful and rude, outrageous. Fostifying things about me. So I took it as far as to go down to the Taylor police station to see if there was there any reports filed against me. They stated that there was none. So as of now.
Shavet, can you slow down just a tad, please?
Sorry. So as of now, he sent me a demand is the notice to quit and demand a property back. And stated that if I wasn't gone by February the first, that he would evict me. But as of today, he sent me a letter today saying that they're coming either between today, well, actually possibly yesterday. And between the ninth of February to do a walkthrough so me, so I could leave. I never even saw him. I was leaving. I want to take it to court again because what he's doing is retaliating against me. He keeps threatening me and harassing me. I'm a tenant that been here seven years. I don't have any problems with none of the tenants, nobody in the office. I never threaten nobody or disrespecting nobody. I paid my rent early, even in the letter he gave me for the demand to quit. He told me even if I paid February's rent, that wasn't going to stop him from evicting me. So I do still have my rent in the money order as usual, but he's refusing to take the payment. And as of right now. I have a fifteen year old and I'm currently four months pregnant and I'm just trying to make sure that I have a suitable living condition over me and my. Son and my future child here that's safe and livable and living with rotting and mold is not, is not suitable.
Shavet, thank you. I think your time is just about up.
That's fine, but I just wanted to share what I'm going through currently because I'm being retaliated against as well as discriminated against. All I asked for current was just for the repairs to get done necessary. And instead of this man doing that, he's want, want to go all to the point of evicting.
Thank you, Shavet.
Thank you.
We will now hear from Rena or Rhina Risper.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. My name is Rena Risper and I am the publisher of the New Citizens Press, but two years ago I was going through a divorce. And had to work for someone else. And it was a very trying time, but I made it through. I was working for a property management company and during that time, of course. As you know, when you get a divorce, you have to split your property and you have to. Sell it or you have to give it back to the person. So I was at that point. I went to a mortgage company to have my house assessed. And to make a long story short, my house was assessed for seventy thousand dollars and. About three months later, the house next door sold for a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. So I took, I was like, what can you do? You're in a situation where you are. You have to get it done. So you can't really complain, even when you are not renting and you're buying. It is a tenuous situation. As a member of the BIPOC community, I feel like sometimes our money. Is being, not being used or we're not being treated fairly so that we have to spend more money. So I took that money and I wanted to go and buy a piece of property that I could live in and also have my business in. I went to a meeting for commercial real estate agents. This is another thing. I don't even know how commercial real estate agents. Are 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 looked at, what, you know, do you, can you file a discrimination case against a commercial real estate agent? Does Lara separate commercial real estate agents from residential real estate agents? But this was in two thousand and nineteen during COVID and I don't even know if the statute of limitations is over. So I go to this meeting. Hello? Rena? Hello?
Harold, it looks like we lost Rena.
Yes, yes, Commissioner. I do not see Rena listed as a panelist any.
All right, we will go to the next person and then we will take Rena back on if she calls back. So next will be Luna Brown.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, my name is Luna Brown. I'm a thirty five year old disabled transgender woman. Um, I live in Lansing and I'm involved in a lot of advocacy in the. Disability and LGBTQ community out here. Um, I'm actually at a housing meeting right now with one organization I work with. I work with. Organization known as The Rent Is Too Damn High. Uh, and I've also recently been working to start a group to try and organize. A transgender homeless shelter in Lansing due to the discrimination within our local shelters. Against LGBTQ people specifically because all of them are religious. Nonprofits that don't have to follow the Elliott Larson Act since they don't receive public funding. Uh, some of the issues I've had with housing specifically as someone with a disability. Um, have really. Come down to the the income requirements that. A lot, like the majority of housing complexes have these days is that you have to make three times. The rent and income in order to rent there, which basically is. As essentially legalized like discrimination towards people with disabilities and getting housing. In the fact that almost no one on disability can even afford, can make. Three times the rent requirements and income off their disability. Um, in even the cheapest units within our city, like the cheapest units run around seven hundred dollars in Lansing. And like most people aren't making over twenty one hundred dollars on disability. I make about fourteen hundred a month off my disability. Um, and that is actually higher than a good amount of my friends my age who are on disability. Um. So that's been just like one of the biggest barriers and I I have lived in an AFC home multiple times. I have been hospitalized over thirty times in inpatient psych facilities. Um, and trying to find stable housing with these issues is very difficult. And basically the answer to anyone with disabilities is we need to go on HUD housing or a section A. Which often have, you know, multiple years long wait lists in order to get your housing vouchers. Um, and even then the housing is not great like. Uh, like I've honestly called them like disabled ghettos, like the the housing they expect us to live in. In these places because it's often like very poorly managed, very rundown housing within the city. And it's essentially turned into disabled ghettos. It's where they shove all, everyone who is on disability. And that that is the entire community. I've lived in them before and. Literally everyone there is on disability and it creates problems honestly because the communities themselves. Uh, end up turning like very gossipy and like very in each other's business, but beside from that like. It's just a really frustrating experience when I don't want to live in subsidized housing and I'm trying to find. Normal housing, but that's not an option because I, even though I can afford the rent. I can't make these income requirements. And basically my only option then is to rent rooms from other friends and other people. Um, which can. Be very dramatic at times trying to search for appropriate housing that way. And add on the fact that I'm trans to it. It's hard enough to find people who are going to be accepting and accommodating enough of my disabilities. Let alone finding someone who's not a bigot as well. And yeah, it it can be very difficult and it's really hard to hold people accountable when it's just an individual person. And you can't necessarily prove that those are the reason why you were denied a room in some multi-room house. That people are renting out the rooms like there, there's really not good ways to report that. Um, because there's really hard, it it's becomes very hard to prove. Um. So really, yeah, it's, it just, you, you end up trapped in this system. Uh, when you do get into a place, even if it's a bad place and you need to get out, you're trapped there because you can't find another place to get into. I was stuck in the last place I lived for six years because I couldn't find anywhere else. That I could get into and meet those income requirements with my disability. Um. And if I had applied for a section A or uh, HUD housing during that time, my name could have came up. On the list, but I would have had to break up my lease.
Luna, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you for your testimony.
Thanks.
Harold, I see that Rena is back. Can you put? Her back on or should we go to the next person?
I'm so sorry. I don't know what it was. It was so weird. It was like a blackout. I'm like, they're listening to me, but anyhow. I was like, they're listening, but my, my concern is really about commercial property and property management. And also my other concern is about, we, a lot of these complaints started during COVID and. How, how are we going? Is there a statute of limitations on complaints? And to make a long story short. I had my, I got my money from my, my house and everything and. I went to a commercial property meeting in Lansing and they kicked me out and told me that I did not belong. And it was like one of the most, it was, it was, it was just so embarrassing. I mean, and the gentleman who did it was loud. And two weeks later, I was at another event with my real estate agent who, who, um, who helped me get the loan. And the man was talking to my boss who was in property management and called me the N word. And asked him, did you know this N word? And I'm thinking to myself, what are you going to do? What, what are you going to do? So, um. I think that one of the things that I think that. Um, your organization needs to do is to advertise to more people to get the word out across. Across Michigan about what discrimination is, what, what needs to be done, who do you need to contact? What are, what are the, what are the, um. What are the organizations that you can contact, people that you can talk to about discrimination? On this phone call today, I heard so many different appraisers, property management, landlords. Commercial real estate agents as well and they, they are really, when, when we're talking about how many African Americans and Latinos and BIPOC. People are now going into business, you know where their money is going into the rent? Because you can't even buy a commercial piece of property without being discriminated against. And I recently had an opportunity to talk to the gentleman. And he was, he just totally took me off of LinkedIn. He did not want to talk about the fact that. Him and another person had discriminated against me publicly in a meeting and told me I didn't belong because I was looking for commercial. Real estate. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Rena. We will now hear from. Adrian Clements.
Commissioner Adrian Clements had to leave. He's no longer available.
All right, then we will hear from Gina Parker.
Hello?
Hi Gina, we, I can hear you.
Hi, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Please go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to come on here and share my story. I was discriminated a couple of times in housing. I lived in East Point and I'm disabled. At the time I had my two sons. Um. I paid cash for my house. My taxes kept going up. And someone told me about the hardship program that I can file for the hardship. So I filed for the hardship and presented all the documentations that they needed. And I was denied. And so when I inquired about why was I denied? They said they didn't know, they didn't have no idea. So when I filed for a hearing. Um, then that's when they called me up to East Point and said, yeah, um, you're approved. And I said, uh, well, you said I was denied. He was like, well, you don't have to go to court. We're just going to approve you. At that time I didn't trust them. So I went to court and I was granted a hundred percent exemption. Um. Through the Michigan Tax Tribunal. Um, so that was, um, back in twenty eighteen. And so, um, with that, they never took my taxes down. They, well, I say they took it down for like two hundred. My taxes are like twenty two hundred. They took it down to like, uh, two hundred, took two hundred off of my taxes. So I still couldn't make my payments and they steady kept going up with the interest rate. So that was one thing. So I reached out to the state representatives, also the city council. And spoke to them. Nobody got back in touch with me, but the state representative did. And he told me he didn't know anything about that, that I probably would have to hire an attorney. So I did write to Governor Gretchen's office and they had a, the citizens meeting, a constituent meeting. And I went to that. So fast forward to twenty twenty three, my taxes went down to thirty four dollars. Um, so I was able, not twenty twenty three, I'm sorry, twenty twenty one, I was able to, um. Make the payment. So, um, that was one issue. Another issue, I filed bankruptcy in twenty nineteen. And I own my house, like I said, right out. Um, my attorney and this is something different. My attorney. Um, lied to me about the bankruptcy laws. I was on chapter thirteen, made my payments on time twenty twenty one. She called me and told me that the bankruptcy laws have changed and I can convert over to a chapter seven. And I wouldn't lose my house and I wouldn't lose my vehicle. So I said, that's a win-win situation for me. And now I can pay the two fifty that I was paying, I can catch up on my taxes. So she lied to me. We go to court and the trustee, um. The trustee told the judge that I was living a lavish lifestyle. I'm trying to stay in a, a house that I can't afford. I shouldn't be entitled to my home. The judge sided with the trustee. They sold my home for less than what I could have got, and that was twenty twenty two. Less than what I could have got. And I do believe they did that because I was black. Um, I'm in a legal. Um. Um, I filed a lawsuit against that attorney. Um, me becoming homeless because of that situation. I stayed in my truck, um, from December to April. I went around everywhere filling out applications. And was getting denied. Um, one off, well, three of them offhand and these are low income. Um, apartments Meadow Park and Wickham, Cliffview Apartments in Rochester Hills. And Preston Point and Brownstown. They all denied me. Um, I was working with Community Housing Network, um, in Oakland and McComb County. I was able to get my section eight, but they wanted me to go to the ran down. Most ran down living conditions. ran down, most ran down living uh, conditions in Pontiac. Drug infested, the housing, um, it was abandoned houses over there. And I'm like, I'm, I'm, that's, I'm, I'm not comfortable over there. And everywhere else I went, they wouldn't approve me. Um, and just to have that experience, me living in my truck. Um, and I'm on disability. Like I, I, I was living in my truck, like I said, from December to April. I finally got an apartment um, in Brownstown, um, which is affordable. But to go through that experience, um, it was devastating. I stayed in the shelter for a month and that was traumatic to me. I was around people that was on drugs. It was very unsafe. So I decided to live in my truck out of that time.
Gina, Gina, I'm, I'm so sorry, but your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you so much for sharing your story with us.
You're welcome.
Next is Dakota Shananaquit. Hello, Dakota.
Hello.
Yes.
I need, thank you. I need Dakota Shananaquit and additional cost. Um, hello, my name is Dakota Shananaquit. I am a member of the Little Travers Bay Band of Odawa Indians. And I was just released from Women's Huron Valley Correctional Facility, May third, twenty twenty-three, after doing a ten and a half year commitment to M D O C for a nonviolent crime. Um, I am an engagement specialist for Nation Outside. And we do fight for fair housing for felons. Um, I am currently restoring my family unit and this includes fair housing. I do not qualify for tribal housing because I am out of the service area. Um, I am currently in the Oakland County region. While incarcerated, I have had the opportunity to graduate with honors from Jackson College and earn three degrees. I was a tutor for the G D program and also the food tech. Um, I was a, for the food tech program. Um, I was a tutor also for two years. Um, I was conduct free um, for most of the part of my prison commitment. And um, I would like to implement how fair and affordable housing would benefit me and my family. I'm a mother, a grandmother, a student, an employee and a human being. I would strongly like to ask for your support in housing bill for eight seventy. The current treatment I have received from landlords have been demeaning, degrading and he, inhumane because of my felony. M D O C speaks about rehabilitation and reuniting families. However, those housing barriers have been hindering me to be self-sufficient, to restore my family dynamics and also my tribal affiliations regard, regarding cultural participation because I do not have a place of my own or support. Please consider a chance for people like myself to obtain fair housing to be successful. I've applied to seven different rentals and haven't been denied because of my criminal history. Um, you know, I really, really, you know, um, wanting to stress the barriers that I've had endured since I've been released because I am a felon. You know, I thought that, you know, my prison commitment was enough. You know, they said that um, truth in sentencing, my ten and a half years was fulfilled. But I still have this one issue. I mean, everything else I've um, overcome. And you know, I'd like to be part of a positive influence in, you know, the community in, in society. And I would just like to um, you know, stress that your decisions are detrimental on me and my family's wellbeing. So please, please, you know, consider fair housing for me and just me so that I can restore my family dynamics. Thank you.
Thank you, Dakota.
Thank you.
We will now hear from Amy Brock.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Amy, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I'm from the Grand Rapids area. I'm an advocate for the agency link up. But I'm also, I've experienced housing discrimination. Um, I also um, have, I'm in the Rent Is Too Damn High group as well. Um, I rallied in Lansing. Um, uh, Representative Reinigans from Ann Arbor is proposing four bills. Um, including a renters bill of rights, um, supporting housing for our homeless population. Um, I'm very much in support of these things. I regularly volunteer with our unhoused neighbors in the Grand Rapids area because at one time I was unhoused myself. Um, I am a person in recovery and I'm also in LGBTQ community. Um, and uh, I'm a former teacher in the city of Grand Rapids. Um, and I, I see in Grand Rapids, they teach, they treat different people differently. Um, I regularly speak in front of the city commission. And um, we passed some ordinances recently and most of the community protested these ordinances. And one is a loitering ordinance. And um, I don't, we already have laws on loitering. And um, it says basically, you could be accused of loitering in a public space. Um, I don't know how you could loiter in a public space. But it's unfair and discriminatory to our unhoused population and it is being un, unforced unfairly. Also, there's a nuisance ordinance. And um, so people could be considered a nuisance. And as they go around sometimes and help out and maybe deliver meals occasionally, whatnot. Um, people are saying, do you have any blankets? Do you have any um, warm clothes? They took mine again. And um, so people are cold. And one day that we got fourteen inches of snow, I begged our city commissioners. I said, does anybody want to sleep one night with me? Any of you in the cold? They just looked at me blankly. And I have a feeling if any of our reps would just do one day of trying what our unhoused neighbors have to do. They would not uh, want to go through these things. People are also, some of the people that work with our unhoused neighbors on a regular basis, a few of them, they regularly chant Bible verses and this kind of thing at the city commission meetings, which there is separation of church and state, although I am a person who reads the Bible. Um, but uh, that really greatly troubles me as well because they seem to hate the very people they work with, recovering people. Um, people in the LGBTQ community, they say, I will not fund that one thing that involves those people. Um, and so they seem to hate, they, they read things about drunkards. Um, and I think you work with people you hate. That very much concerns me. Um, and then I see people begging for social services. And yet we call and we'll call ten places, they're all full. Our shelters unfortunately have gotten bedbugs. Um, they are full. Um, we have a housing crisis. They're gentrifying neighborhoods. And then they base the, the affordable housing on the incomes in a gentrified neighborhood. And so the people who actually work there, while incomes have not went up, um, the housing has increased about twenty to forty percent. I have a disability, um, and yet I must make three times the rent. In the last two to four years, rent has increased by about twenty to forty percent. And so I must make three times the rent or I cannot live here. My studio apartment with amenities, because they add all kinds of amenities, costs eleven hundred dollars a month. It was built in nineteen seventy-one. It is in a safe area. As a recovering person, I want to feel safe and as a trauma survivor. So it, I'm one check away from being homeless myself. But yet I want to reach out because I don't ever want to forget where I was. But I also want to remember where I'm going and I must speak for the voiceless. So, and so these are some great concerns as I speak to the city commission. I want to think they care, but they give tax breaks to these builders and they, they have no insurance of how they're going to help everyone in the community. And this, this is really, really concerning because in the master plan of Grand Rapids, they promise safe housing for all, but the very things, passing laws for drones. They're surveilling these people. They're enforcing laws that seem greatly unfair. They're gentrifying neighborhoods and building buildings people can't afford. And I'm saying, what is happening here? Is anyone noticing this great disparity? And so I am noticing, I'm wide awake, clean four years now. And so I'm just wondering what is going on. Anyway.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Amy, for your testimony.
Thank you.
We will now hear from Tanee Gildea.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, how are you? Thank you so much for hearing from me.
Please go ahead.
Um, so my name is Taney Gildea and I am formerly incarcerated. I also work for Nation Outside. Um, we have House Bill forty-eight seventy-eight out and what that states is that a landlord would have to give us a tentative yes or no based on our income, our credit score, anything besides our criminal history. And after giving us a tentative yes, they would be able to do our criminal history check. And after they do our criminal history check, there are a few carve-out charges that they are allowed to say no to. But once they say no, they would have to give us the opportunity to show what we've done to be rehabilitated since that charge. For me, what that looks like is I spent ten years in and out of the system and on the streets. And that ended me in an uh, incarceration on Women's Huron Valley for four years. In that four years, I gave birth to my first child. But I also earned two college degrees. I'm nine credits from my third. I came out and became certified in pest control. I'm a licensed esthetician, a licensed massage therapist. And no matter where I applied to live, they would take my uh, application fee and tell me that I couldn't live there based on my criminal history. And what got me into this work and caring so much is because I had best case scenario. I seen life through a lens of privilege and I had so much help. And throughout all the time that I spent with all of that help, I still struggled so much that I didn't even question why I spent ten years on the streets and in facilities before I made it to prison. Um, so that's how I came to be working for Nation Outside. And House Bill forty-eight seventy-eight is a statewide push and could help stop the discrimination against people with criminal histories. And I just wanted to come on here and give a little bit of my experience with that. I'm wondering how I can look my eight-year-old in her face and tell her that we aren't allowed to have a home because of something that I did ten years ago. I tell her all the time to make mistakes to be a better human because making mistakes is the only way that you can learn from your own uh, will. And society continually looks at me and tells me that I still have to pay for what I did ten years ago. So thank you. I'm so grateful for the time that you've given me. I appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Tanee. Thank you. We will now hear from Elizabeth Williams.
Sam.
Hello? Elizabeth? Elizabeth?
Good, good evening.
Hi, it looked like you were unmuted. Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Uh, my name is Elizabeth Williams. I would like to speak on an issue with the Detroit Housing Commission. I am disabled. I suffer from major depression, post-traumatic stress disorder. Um, I receive section eight and in receiving section eight, I thought section eight was affordable. And the issue that I'm having is the the complex that I live in, they switched owners. So when they switched the owners, the owner that bought the complex gave everybody section eight. So they went from, because it was actually low income before they bought the property. And once they got the property, they took the property up to market rate, which was eleven hundred dollars. Detroit Housing Commission allowed them to raise my rent up three hundred and forty-eight dollars. I thought when you get on section eight, it's supposed to be affordable. And I also thought that, you know, the workers would kind of, you know, advocate for you. Well, that's not true. I tried to contact my worker. I tried to contact the president, the CEO of Detroit Housing Commission. She told me, call my worker again, which I, which I did and she responded to me. I had to go as far as Governor Gretchen, Governor Whitmer, she referred me to Dana Nessel. Uh, Dana Nessel in turn referred me to HUD, which I had already contacted HUD. HUD did give me relief because they took some of the money that I was paying. I was paying five hundred some dollars and I went from that to nine twenty-two. And I told the lady at HUD, I said, I can't afford this. I thought it was supposed to have been affordable. So what she did, she took some of the funds from me and put it on the Detroit Housing Commission side. So I'm in a program that's supposed to be affordable. And I would like to know, and I would like for someone to sit down with me to show me how they come up with the calculations. I've been told that my voucher is, was ten fifteen. The rent is eleven hundred. I'm supposed to only pay the difference. I don't know how the program works, but I know they killing me. And I need help on, like I said, I want somebody to sit down, show me how they calculate that, sit down and show me something. I'm supposed to be in an affordable program and it's just not working for me. Thank you so much and thank you for allowing me to speak and have a good evening.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We will now hear from Caitlin Homrich-Neeling. And we will hear from one more person after Caitlin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Homrich-Neeling. I'm a resident of Detroit and um, I myself am a homeowner, but I'm friends with a lot of people who are renters um, or who are organizing around the issue of homelessness and affordability of housing. um, or who are organizing around the issue of homelessness and affordability of housing. And I wanted to just, um, say a couple stories I've been hearing lately. Um, and so one is a fact, it's, um, in like the past forty years, rent has gone up, um, a ridiculous amount of money compared to the average income. It's increased by a hundred and thirty percent, while median household income has only increased twenty-two percent. And that was, um, a study commissioned by a government Michigan agency. Um, and it was pre-pandemic, those, that rate of a hundred and thirty percent, which since then, I've been hearing people's rent increasing two hundred dollars a year, three hundred, some people six hundred dollars a year. And people having to take on second jobs and third jobs to cover it, um, including some of my neighbors who actually had to move out of their houses, um, because they couldn't afford the rent increase. Um, and the other, um, note I wanted to make is something that was brought to my attention recently, uh, related to people who are, um, living without houses, um, they're homeless people, that in Traverse City, um, a woman was told she needed to, like, she was trying to register to vote and have a driver's license at the same time. Um, but as a houseless person with a, a registered driver's license, um, it's like a special sort of driver's license that means that she has to say she doesn't have an address. Um, which would, which then like revoked her voting access. Um, like she, like, wasn't able to be registered to vote because she then says she doesn't have an, an address. Um, which is just a pretty glaring issue. Um, overall, though, um, the affordable housing solution that our state government has really pushed and, and supported is, uh, developing new units or rehabbing old, like, hotels and things to have affordable housing units in them. And it's like, while I agree there should be more affordable housing units and more places that take Section Eight, I think that those solutions are not broad enough. And really what we need is the ability to advocate for rent control in our cities. Um, and to make housing more affordable in ways that our cities and our communities in our cities could figure out. Um, but right now we aren't able to do that because there's a ban on rent control in the state of Michigan. So lifting the ban on rent control so that we can hash it out with our city councils of how to make housing more affordable in each of our cities, um, is something that the group that I'm a part of, with People Michigan and Rent Is Too Damn High is advocating for. I really appreciate you all doing this and hearing all of us out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Caitlin. And we will now hear from our last, uh, speaker, Marguerite Maddox. Uh, if anyone else would like to hear or let us, uh, know about your testimony, please feel free to email it to Harold Cor, uh, C O R H.
Thank you.
Michigan dot gov, and Marguerite, sorry, please go ahead.
Thank you. I have I have one issue. That is a piece of equipment. A piece of equipment that that is needed because for me being hard of hearing, hearing, I do not hear the income system working. And that, that piece of equipment, the, the management they're not to end the equipment. And I live in a secondary housing in Detroit, Chicago. And I've been living here since any week. But but ever since my hearing been going down, I did require a service a, 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 a dog to help me with my hearing. And I would like to find out how how can we get management to put in the wrong device that will help people that is their head hearing loss in my bedroom. Because there are a lot of people in my building with hearing loss. I've been begging, begging management for the last five, six years on one issue.
So.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you, Marguerite. Uh, I wanted to be certain that I understood what you were saying, that you have a hearing loss as well as a service animal, and that you are not being accommodated.
Correct.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that concludes the time that is allotted for testimony today. Our next hearing will be an in-person hearing on March sixteen, beginning at four P M at Moth Community College Event Center. Please watch our website at Michigan dot gov backslash M D C R and our social media for updates regarding the future housing hearings and eventual commission recommendations. Thank you so much for spending the evening here and for providing your experiences. Everyone have a good evening.